Today is Tuesday, June 18th, 2019. I'd like to take a moment to ask everyone to silence all electronic devices. For tonight's invocation, we call on Councilmember Bob Lloyd.
Let us pause for a few moments and bow our heads. As all of you are aware, in a little over two weeks, we will, we will on July the 4th, celebrate Independence Day. During our celebrations, we all in some way openly with others or privately express our gratefulness for the many freedoms we enjoy today. We solemnly acknowledge the colonial leaders of the Second Continental Congress for their steadfast courage and brave action in adopting the Declaration of Independence on July the 4th, 1776. In the Declaration of Independence, we find these immortal words. "We hold to be self-evident that all persons are created equal, that they are endowed by their Creator with certain inalienable rights, that among these are life, liberty, and the enjoyment of fruits of their own labor and the pursuit of happiness." As we conduct our proceedings this evening, let us bear in mind those self-evident truths set forth in the Declaration of Independence. And we also ask that our actions be guided by the highest standards of ethics, that our personal faiths give us strength to act honestly and well in all matters before us might. We ask your blessings on our city, county, state, and country. Amen.
We have two special presentations this evening. The first is the Mini Tree Pine Historic Preservation Award. At this time, I'd like to recognize Chair of our Historic Preservation Committee, Molly Whitlatch.
Thank you. Good evening, and thank you for having us. Each year, the Burlington Historic Preservation Commission recognizes historic properties that have been restored in an exemplary manner. The award is named for J. Mini Tree Pine, who was a former member of the commission and a pioneer in Burlington's early historic preservation efforts. He began a campaign in 1966 to save the Globed Lanterns on Fountain Place, and he also served as the Fountain Place Lamp lighter for over 20 years. This year, we are honoring two properties: the home of Eric and Phyllis Holsonback at 606 Fountain Place, and the commercial property of Impact Alamance at 133 East Davis Street. We have a slideshow of both properties, before and after photos, that we'll, can look at as I'm going through the presentation. But as with any historic renovation project, there's a lot of time and money that goes into things that you can't see. And the Historic Preservation Commission in the City of Burlington is grateful to these property owners for their personal and financial, financial commitments to preserving some of Burlington's special historic properties. So I would like to invite the recipients of the award to come up and tell us a little bit about their renovation if they'd like to. So Mr. and Mrs. Holsonback, please come up. And I will present you with this plaque, and then we'd love to hear a little bit more about your renovation. There you go.
Well, I would just like to say that we are very thankful to Bill Mosher, who is an architect here in Burlington, and also our contractor, John Frazier, who is responsible for all of the work.
When we bought this home, we thought we had our eyes open. We did, we rented it, we owned a home on Acorn, and we were displaced because of a fire. And we ended up renting this home for about six months. And while we were doing so, we did a lot of investigative work. We had an appraisal done, we had a home inspection done. And we had owned older homes before. That, I tell myself, I'm cursed with liking older homes. They really get you into a lot of trouble, but they do have a lot of architectural integrity and, that newer homes do not. And so we were attracted to this property. We ended up buying it, and it's just like peeling back an onion. When you peel back one layer, all sorts of things are revealed underneath. And we've certainly encountered that. We're not through. It has really been a love-hate relationship, and, as well as labor-intensive, but also it's been very costly with all the older homes. And so, we were, when I got Mr. Beal's letter, I was just totally blown away that you, that the Historic Commission had, we'd been nominated for the award, first of all, and then that we ended up receiving it. So we thank you very much, and a special thanks to Molly and the commission, because we've been before the board, I think about three times now, and we've been very fortunate that we've gotten approval for everything that we wanted to do, that I think if you look at the before and after pictures, they speak for themselves, and the enhancement, not only to the property, but to the neighborhood as well.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, and I think we have Tracy Grazer here to speak on behalf of Impact Alamance. I got to see this building, and it's just amazing, the renovation that you've done.
Thank you so much.
Congratulations. There you go.
Thank you very much for recognizing our work at Impact Alamance and for the building. So I first have to say thank you to LabCorp, because without LabCorp, this would not be possible. So LabCorp donated this building to us several years ago now, and it took about two years for the renovation, and we're thrilled with the results. But it was, it was two years of intense work with, with Bill Mosher, started as our architect, and you can see some of the before and afters. And Samit was our contractor on the project, and they've done an incredible job. And really, the goal was to invest in downtown, of course, to preserve historic property, some of the oldest buildings in Burlington. And it's actually three different buildings, if you're not familiar with the property. The first one was built in the early 20s, and it went through the 40s, so it's three buildings that have been transformed into one large building, about 38,000 square feet on four different floors. And it was really designed to be a place where we could bring community together, to look at collaboration and innovative solutions for some of our community's challenges. And we've had over 6,000 people use our conference spaces since the building opened to the public in late September, so I think it has, served its purpose well. So thank you for this recognition. We really appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you all for your dedication to preserving the history of our community. Our next recognition is in honor of our upcoming Burlington Royals baseball season. This time, I'll call forward to Mikey Morrison. Welcome.
Thank you. Thank you for allowing me to be able to do this. So Burlington Baseball has really never been put into a better position to succeed going into the baseball season, and it's all because of you. The renovations of Burlington Athletic Stadium have done wonders to the appearance of the ballpark and provided functionality that it's never had before. We moved in the new office roughly three weeks ago, and I can't actually put into words how much easier it is to do our job. Having an actual ticket offices, ticket office, permanent offices, and a fully functional team store has truly changed and dramatically lowered the stress of our day-to-day operations. We're no longer dreading showing people what merchandise we have, because we have to crawl into a wooden shed that is close to 115 degrees inside. We're struggling to print tickets, because we only have one ticket printer, and we forgot to plug it back in after unplugging it from the old ticket booth the night before. It's been an absolute joy and honor to show off the ballpark to season ticket holders, corporate sponsors, and even some of you and other city employees. Last night, our Busch Club is actually in the third base picnic area, doing a preseason cookout for, for some of the guys before they hit the road this morning. And they asked me to unlock the new bathrooms, just so that they could use those, instead of using the bathrooms that were 200 feet closer in the Roberts Building. Innovative Science has been in the ballpark the past couple days, installing player banners out front, and now when you ride by, you want to go into the ballpark. I've worked at Burlington Baseball since 2013, and the transformation the ballpark has gone through is nothing short of remarkable. I can remember leaving the ballpark and driving by and not thinking anything of it as I pulled away. But now, I can't help but rubberneck as I drive by, and I get paid to be there every day. The ballpark has curb appeal that it has never had before, and it pulls at your curiosity and your desire to see what is going on at the facility, even when a game is not going on. Burlington Baseball cannot thank you and the rest of the city of Burlington enough for the investment you put into the ballpark. You are the reason why baseball can stay here and has stayed here for the last 33 years. If it were the responsibility of Burlington Baseball Club Incorporated to be able to handle all these renovations through the years, that would never happen. We wouldn't be able to afford it, and baseball would have left several years ago. I can still see and hear the heartbreak in some of our fans' voices when they talk about the team leaving after the 1972 season. These renovations and the countless other renovations that have been done at the ballpark through the years continue to ensure that baseball does not go anywhere, and again, we simply cannot thank you enough. This coming Friday, we'll have the opportunity to show off the ballpark to the public for the first time with our first annual Fan Fest. This unique event will give Royals fans an opportunity to take batting practice on the field and give them a chance to see the investment the City of Burlington has put into Burlington Athletic Stadium firsthand. We have a social media scavenger hunt included during the event to encourage and practically force folks to see all the renovations at the stadium. Burlington Parks and Rec will help us run the event, and we'll be bringing out life-size Jenga and other games to be played on the concourse during the event. Bingo's Diamond Diner, our new food truck and kitchen, will also be making its debut to serve our improved concession menu for fans to enjoy. Opening night is this coming Monday, June 24th, with first pitch set at 6:30. As a small token of our appreciation, all City of Burlington employees, full and part-time, have been given free tickets to the game. We'll also be giving away a tee-shirt to the first 500 through the gates that says, "I was at the grand reopening of Burlington Athletic Stadium," and ending the night with a bang, several actually, with our first fireworks show of the year presented by Burlington Parks and Recreation. One final thing before I finish, and that is I'm still close with former Burlington General Manager, former Burlington General Managers Ben Abzug and Ryan Kerr. Both are working for fantastic minor league organizations right now, but both will not hesitate to tell me how much they valued, appreciated, and missed the relationship with the City of Burlington. This city is truly one of a kind and should be a model to all cities for a way municipalities should support a ball club. Again, without you, none of this happens, and we cannot thank you enough for the support and the investment you have put into Burlington Athletic Stadium. Thank you for allowing me to speak to you today. It has been a true honor.
Thank you, Mikey. Is it my understanding that you brought a little surprise for everybody?
I wish that I did. I'd give you another compliment.
Okay. All right. Well, it's my understanding that we have peanuts and Cracker Jack for folks along the Royals' schedule, so if you didn't get one on your way in, please grab one on your way out.
They're spread over the stadium.
Yeah? Awesome. So we hope you enjoy Fan Fest and the upcoming Royals' season. At this time, we recognize our interim city clerk, Beverly Smith.
Members of council, it's my responsibility to remind you of the duty to obey the current amendments and the current agenda items.
Next, we have approval of minutes. We have the minutes from May 6th, 2019, City Work Session. Do I hear a motion to approve those minutes?
So move.
Second. All those in favor, please say aye. All those opposed? Minutes have been approved. Next is our agenda. Do I hear a motion regarding the agenda?
Mayor, if I could, I'd add that item E be removed and placed on the agenda at a later date, with the counties would agree to that. That's one of the recommendations earlier made by the manager. I have a few questions. I think I can get them revolved fairly tuned with him to get here on the agenda next time.
A motion to approve the agenda, striking item E to be approved at a later date.
I make a motion to be approved the agenda as written minus item E. I have a question.
Do I hear a second? Second. Bob, is that appropriate to your request?
Yeah.
All right. Any questions regarding the motion? All those in favor, please say aye. All those opposed? Motion has been approved. Next is our consent agenda. These items are typically non-controversial. If anyone has any questions, please let us know. Item A, to make the following advisory board and commission appointments effective July 1st, 2019. The details of those are spelled out in your agenda. Item B, to approve a multi-jurisdictional agreement to operate Burlington Animal Shelter and the Pet Adoption Center. Item C, to approve an annual agreement for fiscal year 2019, 2020, between the City of Burlington and Witzet Fire Department, Inc., for first responder fire protection and emergency medical technician services, effective July 1st, 2019 through June 30th, 2020. Item D, to approve a time modification for a temporary street closing on Davis Street from Main Street to Spring Street during the Room at the Table Special Event hosted by Healthy Alamance on Friday, July 19th, 2019. The modified time request is from 12 noon until 10:30 PM for pre-event setup. Item E has been removed. Item F, to adopt a proposed ordinance revision to Article 6 Personnel Systems, Chapter 2 Administration, to be effective July 1st, 2019. Item G, to approve an agreement between the City of Burlington and Clearscapes, PA, and approve Budget Amendment 2019-40 Denzel Carousel Restoration Capital Project Ordinance for design services and creation of a mini-master plan for City Park amusement area. Item H, to approve Budget Amendment 2019-41, all funds as of fiscal year, ending June 30th, 2019. Item I, to approve Budget Amendment 2019-42, to allow the Recreation Department to use funds received from Impact Alamance to purchase shades for the Botched Ball Courts at Chernobyl Senior Center. Item J, to approve Budget Amendment 2019-43, to allow the Recreation Department to recognize donations made through fiscal year 2018 to 2019. Do I hear a motion to approve the foregoing consent agenda?
Move.
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye. All those opposed? Motion has been passed. Next, we have two public hearings this evening. Public hearing number one, a public hearing has been set to consider adopting an annexation ordinance for 3530 Harris Road contiguous voluntary annexation. At this time, we recognize principal planner and long-range planning, David Beal.
Thank you, Mayor. What we have before you tonight is a voluntary contiguous annexation agreement that began as a request for utility services. The request has been approved through the city's new service procedure for utility connection requests. It now comes before you for annexation consideration. A valid petition for the annexation has been received and certified by the city clerk. The request is actually for two parcels owned by Wilson Homes, Inc. The first, containing plus or minus .73 acres, would be for a principal building lot for a single-family home, and the second, containing plus or minus .29 acres, is designated as a septic easement for that principal lot. It is possible to provide the property with city services, with the exception of sewer, which is not required as part of a voluntary annexation request. Associated fees related to serving this property would be $13.43 per month for street lighting, $32.40 per month for solid waste, and there's also a one-time debt service payment to the Elon Fire District of $27.75. These parcels are contiguous to the current city limits through both the lake and the McIntosh Water Treatment Facility. This is a public hearing, and I believe Mr. Lee Wilson, the owner, is present to speak if there are any questions, and staff will be happy to try and answer any questions you may have about the annexation.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Mr. Wilson, did you want to speak at all? Did you want to mention anything before we begin the public hearing? All right. Thank you. This is a public hearing. If anyone on this side of the room would like to speak regarding this annexation. Anyone on this side of the room? Do I hear a motion to close public hearing?
Make a motion to close the public hearing. Second.
All those in favor, please say aye. All those opposed? Public hearing is now closed. Do I hear any questions or a motion from council?
Mayor, I'd just like to follow up on the septic field. In terms of its locations, you're right, McIntosh, which is obviously a primary water reservoir, is that, through the Health of Public Regulations, has that been cleared and certainly researched?
Yeah, Mr. Owen, I believe Mr. Wilson can answer that, but generally, septic permits are approved by Alamance County Health Department, and it is very common along that road for any development. Have you obtained your permit, Lee?
Yes.
Okay.
So what's the setback rate required? What's the setback distance required? Do you know, remember?
For the septic?
Yeah.
About 50 feet.
Other questions?
Exactly, be 60 feet, because it's 10 foot off the property line.
Other questions from council? Do I hear a motion regarding the septic?
If we approve the annexation ordinance effective June 18th, 2019, at 11:59 PM.
Any questions regarding the motion to approve? All those in favor, please say aye. All those opposed? Motion has passed. Thank you, Mr. Wilson. Public hearing number two. A public hearing has been set to receive community input on the draft Maple Avenue corridor plan. At this time, we recognize interim planning and community development director, Mike Nun.
Good evening, Mayor and council. Hope you have your copies of the draft plan. Tonight, I bring before you the draft plan to discuss it, but before we do that, I just want to mention a few comments to you. Again, remind you, this was part of the Destination Burlington Comprehensive Plan that was adopted in 2015. Identified this corridor as the top corridor in need of improvement into our city. Key things for improvement were mentioned, such as beautification, infrastructure improvement, and increase the economic growth of the entire corridor. Tool Design is here tonight with Chris Lamka tonight to present to you a short presentation. This was given to you at June 3rd's work session, where you set the public hearing for this evening. Before I turn it over to him, I want to also mention a thank you to the Maple Avenue Stakeholders Committee that worked with us throughout this process, made up of business owners and property owners in the corridor, that attended those meetings and helped develop this plan. So I'll turn it over to Chris at this time, and staff's available afterwards to answer questions.
Welcome, Chris.
Thank you. Thank you, Mike. Pull this up here and get this started. Mayor, council, just want to thank you for the opportunity to be here tonight and be with you and talk to you about this important initiative for the new Maple. Ernie Bowman sends his regrets that he's not able to be here. He and his family are celebrating his daughter's 10th year of being cancer-free, so they are just at home celebrating and having an exciting time. So he left me with you guys, so I think he left you guys in good hands, so you'll have to let him know if he did or not. But before we start, I just wanted to say and just commend you guys on the efforts that are already taking place that we heard about: the historical preservation in a residential home, in a commercial site, and then in the ballpark. And that revitalization is happening now and will again ring true here on Maple Avenue with the Renew Maple Avenue Plan. To remind council of the corridor limits in the city, we are south of Interstate 40 at Anthony Road, and then north up to Church Street, which is just shy of 3 miles, at 2.7 miles. And Maple Avenue must be transformed. That's something that we heard time and time again throughout all of our public involvement. So through meaningful engagement, the public is definitely behind this plan, as you see here, that they really want a wow factor when you get off the interstate and you come into downtown Burlington. This is what Mike said, one of the corridors identified as most need of improvement in the Destination Burlington Downtown Comprehensive Plan of 2015. It's important that we garner that, that input and move forward, and this project is directly from your 2015 comprehensive plan. So Tool Design implemented a great streets approach, and what that means is that we place people as priority. So people walk, they bike, they drive a car, they may drive a truck, they live on the corridor or they work on the corridor. And with that, we also have a triple bottom line of quality. So we have quality of design, service of transportation, and quality of life for the residents and the users. And we have a mantra at Tool Design that we want to make sure that the trip is as enjoyable as the destination. Throughout the Renew Maple process, we had multiple avenues to garner public feedback through meaningful engagement. We had three community workshops and open houses. We had over 30 one-on-one stakeholder interviews with individuals. We had 40 individual interactions, or personal interactions, and then we, excuse me, we had 400, and then we had an additional 400 surveys that were also gathered and part of our public input process. Throughout the plan, we looked at several different factors, and land use and context was one of them. The corridor has several distinct characters, as you see represented here in the four corridor zones, and we'll dive into those here shortly. But one of those is the transportation context, and so we looked at the current ADT, the amount of vehicles that are on the roadway. We looked at the number of lanes, the public transit, as well as bicycle and pedestrian facilities that are on the corridor. Rose and Associates, a subconsultant to the team, did a market analysis along the corridor. There was a variety of factors, both positive and negative, that they derived along this. And you will recall that the last property revaluation saw a decline in the property values, and this will continue if we don't do something that will change Maple Avenue for the better of the community. The market analysis determined what types of real estate can be supported along the corridor and what types can fill in the gaps along the corridor. So after we looked at all of the public feedback and what we garnered from that, we need to move forward with recommendations. And so these, some of the recommendations are corridor-wide. So these are safety improvements or access management improvements that we heard from the, the community that they wanted. We also need to look at a corridor overlay district to make sure that we inform proper development and the development that the community and you as council want to see happen in Burlington. And we will, this will work in tandem with the Unified Development Ordinance that you currently have and can amend. So as you can see, we had, as we previously mentioned, there are four distinct corridors. There's no one silver bullet to most corridors, especially if they're three miles long. And so we had a variety of typical sections that, that plugged on the context and the aesthetics of the, the environment. So one of them, in our mixed zone, this is the existing condition. So this is currently the NCDOT-owned and operated portion of Maple. It's a five-lane roadway, and it's very wide. You can go pretty fast on the street, and that's one of the symptoms of, of the corridor. But we have excess capacity. Right now, we only have about 16,000 vehicles a day on the street. This design could actually hold double that. So we have a lot of excess capacity along the roadway. So what could it look like? Through our recommendation, we're wanting to turn the excess capacity into multimodal transit opportunities, as well as landscape and access management. And NCDOT has been at the table throughout the entire process and has walked along the process with the city and Tool Design as the consultants and approve this current recommendation. Another opportunity is in the neighborhood zone. This is currently under the control of the city. We have a four-lane roadway. It's still very wide. There's about 9,000 vehicles a day here. This design can actually hold about triple that of what you currently have. So we have high speeds, again, here in a 35 mile an hour zone. You could probably do 55 or 60 and not notice that you're doing it, unfortunately. But one thing I do want to point out is that you have wonderful housing along this. You're also only 15 minutes away from downtown by walk, so you could walk here easily. So this is very attractive housing for young families that want to move into the area. And our recommendation looks like this, to where we're, again, using the excess capacity for multimodal facilities, landscape, and really revitalizing the corridor. In addition to the 2.7-mile corridor study that we performed, we also were asked to look at catalyst sites and potential sites. And we landed on two sites here that are indicated. Site A is the old BMOC facility, which is west of Maple, towards the interstate. And then Site B is the current Food Lion and Granddaddy's location to the east of Maple. And we looked at a variety of different things through the market analysis, what it could hold, and looked at redevelopment potential in that area. That created the catalyst site master plan, which you see here. And in this master plan, I want to remind everyone that this is a concept, and that it is one concept of many that could be here, but it is very, it's indicative of a proper catalyst site. We're trying to recreate block structure with this, so you see the new block structure. We're also trying to create a safer roadway from the interstate and a beautiful corridor as you come in. A little bit of background, the red lines indicate the current alignment of Maple Avenue, as well as plantation and Park Ave, or Drive there, Plaza Drive, excuse me. We were, again, NCDOT was brought on to look at this, and they are on board with this, but they had a few things that they wanted to resolve as there are current transportation issues along the corridor. The first of that is to the north at the intersection of Harden and Chapel Hill. And so we And so we were asked by NC DOT to correct the skew for safety, and so we had a mandate to make that 90 degrees and keep it that way. The second was to the south, and we did not want to relocate the interstate on and off ramps, because that would then get FHWA, the Federal Highway Commission, involved, and it would be a much more lengthy process. So we had two constraints on Maple Avenue to the north and the south, and that indicated that we needed to have the curve that you see. The curve also acts as a speed reduction measure. As many of you know, that when you get off the interstate, you tend to drive faster because you've been doing 65 and 70 miles an hour. That helps to decrease your speeds, as well as provides a more enticing corridor and allows for the landscape and the redevelopment. Another item that NC DOT had requested us to look at was the number of signals along the corridor between the interstate and Harden and Chapel Hill intersection. Currently, there's four signals in this short stretch of roadway, and they're contributing to some of the congestion along the corridor. And they asked us to relocate and align the Plaza Drive and Plantation Drive intersection signal to the current location of the Burlington. And the third item that NC DOT requested is that we relocate the intersections of Plaza Drive and Plantation Drive, as they're too close to the intersection with Maple and also causing some congestion. So by doing that, we relocated that intersection to the roundabout that you see in the central part of the Catalyst Site to the west. That allowed us to not only meet the NC DOT requirements, but create a sense of place for the community college, as well as recreate that block structure in which you see here that's indicative of a typical downtown or redevelopment site. So again, I just want to reiterate that this is the conceptual plan, and it's very important that we start with a conceptual plan so that we can then create cost estimates of opinion of probable cost, as well as entice developers and inform developers of the type of development that we want here in Burlington. So how do we implement the plan? We have to start somewhere and know where to go. So we go from recommendations to implementation. And first, we want to start with the role of Renew Maple Avenue Plan. Very high level is usually where we have our vision, and this project came from the vision of the Destination Burlington Plan, and that's about 100,000 feet view. So we're really high level. We're looking at the whole city. If we dive down to the ground level for implementation, that's where we do construction drawings and return dirt. But the Renew Maple Plan is right in the middle. It's about 50,000 feet. There's still some details that need to be ironed out. Not all decisions have been made, but this is going to be a clear roadmap for the city and council to move forward and stand behind. So most cities can't complete a project like this in one swoop. We would love to just wave a magic wand and create this project and be completed, but we needed to break this down into manageable phases and ensure that it can be completed in sequence that makes sense for the community. We also looked at potential funding and in-kind sources for all of the phases. Now, these are not committed dollars, but they are representative of our knowledge of past projects. And one thing that I do want to mention is that $10,000 or $10 million of this budget is for the undergrounding of utilities along the entire corridor. We also want to make sure that the momentum continues with the plan. The plan has generated a lot of momentum in the community, so we have early action projects that we would like to move forward while we're setting up the bigger projects and finding funding and starting design of those projects. So you may ask yourself, why should we do this, and what's the return of our investment? Well, I want you to make sure that we don't just think about the economic dollars. The economic dollars are very important, but there's also other tangible benefits through health, equity, and safety, environmental, and quality of life that people want to come to. The first one I want to hit on is safety. Similar projects of this nature where we use excess capacity for multimodal improvements, landscape, and economic show a 19% to 47% reduction in crashes. So there's a significant safety improvement. We also know that the slower you are moving in a vehicle, the less severity of injury you're going to have, whether you're a pedestrian or in another vehicle with a collision or accident. Slides got switched on there. I didn't move forward. I apologize. One thing to note as well is that we have numerous studies that show that people want to move to locations that are more walkable and bikeable and have transportation opportunities for them. And that's not only millennials that want to do that. That's also baby boomers that want that same type of environment. It's freezing up on me. I apologize. We also know that the more walkable your community is directly results in increased dollars from a residential standpoint, so your property values increase. We were asked to look at several different projects that are similar in size in communities across the country. And while there's multiple on here, we looked at nine. I want to highlight Spartanburg, South Carolina. I'm a little partial there because that's where I'm from. But in the five years since Spartanburg announced improvements to their downtown, over 100 new businesses have opened, and downtown hospitality taxes have seen an annual 8% increase. Not just an 8% increase over the five years, an annual 8% increase over that time period. And based on our research of those nine communities, for every $1 that's invested from the public side, there is a $23 return from the private side. That's a significant amount of investment and rate of return from the economic standpoint. So what are our next steps? So we're asking for the adoption of the Renew Maple Avenue Plan. The adoption will not commit the city to spending any money. However, it will provide you a roadmap for the Maple Avenue corridor and for the future development of that corridor. Thank you.
Thank you, Chris. Any questions from council before we begin the public hearing, Ms.?
Let me ask one question. I think that on this slide, it said that Spartanburg saw a increase in businesses starting with the announcement of the project?
It did. Yes, ma'am. And also, and don't quote me on initial dollars there, but in the last five years, the city has seen in downtown over $250 million of private investment since their rebuild of Main Street and doing that plan.
Are there council questions before we begin the public hearing? Chris, you have a moment after the presentation or after the public hearing to answer any questions that folks raised.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. This is a public hearing. If anyone on this side of the room would like to speak regarding this side. Yes, sir.
I have a question on the...
If you could come to the microphone.
Sure.
For the folks watching at home. And if you could state your name and address just for the...
John Mazaris, 2966 Maple Avenue. I just had a question on the typical section that you recommended, which is going to basically take four lanes down to two. Is it going to be, the speed reduction there is going to be significant? Are you talking about going to like 25 miles per hour for posted speed limit within the different tipicals?
That hasn't been determined yet. I mean, as we reduce lanes, we certainly, and working with DOT, would entertain, especially if it's a two-lane divided section, you would certainly consider it 35 mile an hour. I wouldn't see 25 in that context.
Okay. I was just, we're roundabouts. It's usually around 25. I'm a runway design engineer by trade. I am a licensed P. So I was just wondering with the, with the reduction with that much ADT, I know it's overcapacity when you go down to one lane, are you going to be creating backups rather than, than, than actually solving a problem?
So I know the consultants have analyzed that, and they feel like that, you know, the existing capacity to volume ratio works well with the roundabouts and areas that they presented. You know, if this moves forward at some point, when we dig down deeper into design in the future, we'll certainly look at those things closer to make sure those things are going to work.
Okay. Is there a conceptual cost estimate on what these corridor improvements would, would cost?
Yes, sir. They're in the plan. It's online, and each phase has a dollar amount associated with it.
Okay. I was just wondering what the percentage was on runaway cost versus roadway cost?
I don't know off the top of my head. Chris, if you have it.
So this is a conceptual plan by nature, and so we do not have survey at this time. So this was all used by GIS and aerial photography. So that breakdown is not necessarily known.
And Chris, as you mentioned, that would be in the next phase.
That's in the next phase. So we've allocated a dollar amount to that. However, I don't, I don't have that breakdown with me, but it will change as we move into the implementation.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you, John. Anyone else on this side of the room would like to speak? If you could state your name and address.
Sure. My name is Gary Brandt. I'm with the Burlington Shrine Club. I'm not really here to speak about the Burlington Shrine Club so much, except that most of you on council know how we feel about even the conceptual plan, that it has a tremendous impact on our property. We do have the hotel folks here, so hopefully they're going to give you some facts and figures. And I know why Mikey was so nervous up here now, and he had a written-out speech. Most of my comments are from an outside point of view. I live in Meven, and I've been in Alamance County now for, ooh, 40-plus years. I know I don't look that old, but anyway. Maple Avenue's always been the way it is, in my opinion. It really puzzles me as to why the city of Burlington would spend so much money to go into town. I know Spartanburg keeps coming up. Spartanburg's got a college. Spartanburg probably has tremendous storefronts that they built up. Where is it in Burlington? LabCorp owns downtown Burlington for the most part. I don't know where all these businesses are going to pop up. Again, I live in Meven, so I'm not speaking from a resident of Burlington's point of view. I'm just pondering, giving you some questions to ponder if you haven't already, from an outside standpoint. If the speed is so bad going down Maple Avenue, maybe the police department needs to put some vehicles over there and slow people down, just in opinion. I remember one of the presentations, excuse me, they talked about when they would go through the Maple Avenue-Harden intersection, it was like a hard-to-make curve through there. One of my lodge brothers told me that he's lived in the area for 50 years, very close to the intersection. He's never had any problems going through there. If you go to the speed limit, you shouldn't have any problem either. So anyway, I just wanted to bring up a couple of those points, and that's really about all I have to say, and I appreciate your time.
Thank you, Mr. Brandt. Anyone else on this side of the room would like to speak?
Thank you. I wasn't planning on speaking tonight. Tracy Grazer, Impact Alamance, and I'm also on the board of the New Leaf Society. So at Impact Alamance, one of the things that we work on is building healthy environments. And while we have not been involved directly in this project, we have been involved in many other types of projects like this throughout the county. So we've looked at greenways, we've looked at active modes of transportation, we've invested significantly with the city of Burlington when it comes to active play and healthy environments from that nature. And I just want to speak in support of this plan. I'm impressed with what it has been laid out, and I think all of the points that have been brought up are valid. There's so much research now from an evidence-based perspective that when you make these kind of investments in your community, that you are going to see not only an economic return, but you're also seeing a return from an equity standpoint, from an accessibility standpoint, from a health standpoint. All of those things are incredibly important to the quality of life in a community. There is a lot of research now that, as has been pointed out this evening, from a millennial standpoint and from a baby boomer standpoint, that people are not looking for where they can get jobs anymore. They're looking to where they want to live, what they have access to in those areas, and that's where they locate. Then they look for a job. So the economic development standpoint from, from that alone, I think, is, is very important. So again, I was not looking to speak tonight, but I definitely want to put support behind the project. Our Wellness Collaborative, the city of Burlington's an active participant in that, and we do look at advocacy and active modes of transportation as one of the key tenants of the Wellness Collaborative, and this certainly fits what we're trying to do in our community in terms of making it better from a health and an economics perspective. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Grazer. Anyone else on this side of the room?
Good evening. My name is Richard Parker, and I live at 417 South Broad Street. I have attended every council work session about this project and the three public input meetings at the senior center. After studying the most recent presentation by the Tool Group and looking at the detailed maps, I'm a little concerned about public safety. I worry particularly about the neighborhood zone from Meven Street to Anthony and the mixed zone from Anthony to Chapel Hill Road. From where I live and work, I hear sirens of first responders going up and down Maple Avenue through these two zones almost every day of the week. I think the fire chief would agree that some emergency vehicles go up and down this stretch every 24 hours. So after reviewing the cross-sections and the intersections of Tool's presentation, the section from Meven Street to Chapel Hill Road seems to be mainly one 11-foot-wide roadway with turn lanes at each intersection. Mike, could you show that slide for me, pull it up from the presentation? So the, my concern on this, this slide, for example, how will first responders get around traffic on these long stretches of proposed single-lane roadways? What about a garbage truck making its way down Maple Avenue, and a fire truck needs to get around for an emergency? I would hope that valley curbs would be installed so that vehicles could mount them to move over, although the cross-sections in this concept show standard curb and gutter design. So if you vote tonight to continue planning for this road project, I would ask you to perform a demonstration project, as was mentioned tonight. Here's what I'd like to see us do. As we move along, let's take that neighborhood zone from Meven Street to Anthony, just five blocks long, grind off all the road markings, and repaint this section with the exact plan that the consultants have proposed. Mark all 38 curb cuts, the median separation, paint the left turn lines that are shown on the plans, then paint Maple Avenue with one 11-foot outbound and one 11-foot inbound lane. Once it's marked, let's all drive it for six months or a year. Let's see if the fire trucks can get through in an emergency. Let's see if the post office trucks and garbage trucks will impede the traffic. Let's see how the police will maneuver with only one lane of traffic open to them. And most importantly, let's get some feedback from the public and our first responders to evaluate this plan. We're a very long way from the start of this project, so let's take some of the early actions that were mentioned tonight, and let's paint the lines on the road and drive them and just see, let's try it out before we build it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Parker. Anyone else on this side of the room would like to speak? Anyone else on this side of the room would like to speak?
Hey, I'm Coleman Rich. I'm incoming president for the Burlington Downtown Corporation, and my address is 2116 Hawthorne Lane. If I understand this correctly, is that what you're voting on is the concept to renew the Maple Avenue corridor?
To accept that.
To accept that. So, and so, hearing that there are a lot of issues, to me, this is the most exciting thing that I've seen in a very long time. Mr. Huffman reminded me today that I've been here in Burlington for about 65 years, and we've kind of seen this, we've seen this area over a period of time. I think what, doing this, is that a few years ago, we had Roger Brooks, who was a consultant, who came in and was talking about the downtown area. And one of the things that was most glaring to him is that Burlington really didn't have a gateway going into the downtown area. I think this solves that. I think if you look at a lot of other towns, that they have done the same thing with a lot of success as shown in your presentation, in that the fact that the economic development that will start will go all the way down Maple Avenue over a period of time and into the downtown area. You can't build enough residential apartments or whatever to get a critical mass in the downtown area, and it's never been that way. And people who use the downtown area always lived on the perimeter of the downtown area. I think this will improve that, and you're correct about with millennials, I teach those every day at Elon, and they have a different concept, being able to, and being able to be in an area where they can actually walk and use the services in the downtown area, I think would be tremendous. So, I think from our perspective, looking at this corridor and what it will do for the city of Burlington, I think you're on the right track, and I think we'd like to see that you go forward with it. I know there are some issues that need to be worked out, and I'm sure with the confidence of the staff that you have, and those things will be resolved over time. But I think this is very exciting for the city.
Thank you, Mr. Rich. Anyone else on this side of the room would like to speak? Welcome. If you could state your name and addresses.
My name is Booney, and this is my father, Ashwin. We are from Red Carpet Inn, which is on Plantation Drive. We lease a property with Shrine Club. I'm sorry, I'm not really into stuff, I'm more of a medical student. But our thing is that we spent a lot of money, it hasn't even been a complete year. We renovated the entire hotel. It's a really big property. The property not only holds customers where they can stay, but we ourselves stay there. We've been living there for years. We spent...
Five hundred to six hundred thousand dollars.
On the renovation.
Completely, no.
And it's still under renovation, and so, we don't know what we'd do if that was taken away from us, because that's all we have. We're not the only hotel, there's multiple hotels that are involved in this. So, our concern is, we spent a lot of money, we're not the richest people. Also, I'm pretty sure a lot of businesses around there that are being affected are also affected by this, but not many will come here and say things. We did. So, that's just a perspective from us. And is there anything?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else on this side of the room would like to speak?
Good evening. Good evening. I'm Red Davis, 2903 Hamhurst Avenue in Burlington, and also president of the New Leaf Society. As you know, one of our primary objectives is enhancing our welcome map to the community through landscape corridors and gateways to our city. University Drive, of course, is one of our first projects, and you can see what it is today. We believe that landscaping and beautification is more than just planting trees and shrubs, it is actually economic development. We believe we enhance our community through these plantings, and I will tell you, the New Leaf Society is committed to help you with this corridor, not only in design, but also in plant material purchasing and installation. So, well, we would welcome the opportunity to partner with you if this project goes forward, because we really believe this is one of the assets of this community, is our beautification efforts, our landscaping. As a matter of fact, the New Leaf Society is modeled after the Noble Trees Society in Spartanburg, South Carolina. We have seen what it does for economic development, so we stand committed to help you with this project.
Thank you, Mr. Davis. Anyone else on this side of the room would like to speak? Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor. My name's Don Kaler, I'm a former resident of Burlington, North Carolina, I live in Nag's Head, North Carolina now. I'm a member of the Burlington Shrine Club, and we do own some property there. I would like to ask if you would pull up your site map of the Site A, where the proposal really is taking part of the Shrine Club property, which I think is obviously important to all of us folks there. There are some alternatives, the other one with the greenways and everything, that one, perfect.
Mike, can you make that larger, so everyone can see it? Thank you.
Yeah, the future development parts there, the tan parts do, and the parking spaces there along your new corridor. Obviously, Plantation Drive can be run right back around the existing structures in the part that's under future development. And I'd just like to encourage the council and the planning folks to look at some alternatives that won't disrupt the properties that are there, that do represent some important parts for our city and for our community, and certainly for the investment that these folks have made to try and improve that property over the years. I think it's important to at least give some alternative thoughts to maybe going around those existing properties. If you don't mind investing dollars, certainly you're affecting other people's dollars that are already there as property owners along that corridor as well. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Kaler. Anyone else on this side of the room would like to speak? Do I hear a motion from council to close public hearing?
No move.
Paul, listen, please say aye.
Aye.
Paul is opposed. Public hearing is now closed. Do we have any questions from council?
I'd like to speak a couple of comments, some comments made by the public. Mr. Brandt, I agree in terms of the economic development compared to Spartanburg, because I tried to plug my phone and multiply that number out, it was so big my phone couldn't get it. So, I went back to the times of when you went to NC Steg, you understood mathematics. So, based on that concept, it would have to be $1 billion, $35,000, I'm sorry, $1 billion, $35,000 investment to match it, 1 to 23, based on what we projected to put out there. So, we don't need to lead anybody to believe that's going to take place. I mean, reality, I'm not sure it will. But the concept is something that some of us have heard for a long time in reference to, we've made improvements in our western area, and I'd say even Alamance Road to University Drive, in terms of entry to the city. Huffle Mill Road, maybe not as much, but obviously, New Leaf and DOT has worked immensely at these intersections. That intersection there, Maple Avenue, frankly, is not the most attractive one in our community. A thing that we're seeing that, at least over the years now, we keep talking about millennials and who's going to live here, we need millennials to live here. You know, we need new people to move here. And that, frankly, is the most eastern part of our major entries into our community, with a number of people now who's actually commuting to the Research Triangle area for jobs. So, I do see some return on this in reference to what it could do for our community. It's a big project. But what I will say, that one thing that was not mentioned tonight, was at the work session two weeks ago, was it not, that a big part of this discussion was based on something called, and it's the next thing on the agenda here, if I'm not mistaken, is the bill grant, which is a federal grant, which is to be called a tiger grant. The bill grant is one, and in my search, it's easy to get it, it's a complicated process to go through, but it's something that, since that time, I've looked at some various communities, and communities just much like ours, that have been able to get involved with that. And that's a core group, really a core number of dollars. The maximum, which no one can promise, I think, is $25 million. And if I'm not mistaken, and I'll ask Noel and Mike to help me, obviously there's different intervals of that, there's a process with that that goes forth, which often, in many communities our size, has been the stimulus that has led to something close to this magnitude of being built. Richard's comment about the residential side of this area, which is important in terms of roadway, you know, actually, to me, this situation is almost four parts, is the part from the interstate to Chapel Hill Road, then it's really from Chapel Hill Road to Anthony, and that's sort of multi-use type development now. And then from Anthony, back down towards downtown, is really where your residential options are, if you really want to get to that point. So, you make an interesting point about the traffic in terms of what's going to lead to what, and are you going to, you know, how much flow do you need for safety reasons, and that's something we probably need to certainly take a look at. But, you know, personally, my opinion is, I think it's something we need to continue to focus on. I think, at least from what I know right now, unless there's a desire to do a public bond package, the city certainly doesn't have $46 million back right now. Okay? That's just not the case. I wish I could tell you it was back in a piggy bank somewhere, but it's not. The city is financially, I think, very positive position, but not many communities can pull that off. So, obviously, the, I think, and people on the council may disagree with me, much of what we do going forward is going to depend on outside matching grants, whether it's a federal or state, or even from the private side. This is just too big of a project to think that the city can take it on by itself. Now, to get those grants, though, you've got to have a design like this. I mean, you really have to show something to people that's going to give them, who makes those decisions, enough confidence in you that if this goes forward, the impact it'll have on your community. You mentioned Spartanburg. I reference this, too, as frankly, maybe somewhat different, but this road typically, if you take this to Church Street, you're not very far from Elon University either, that you cross Church Street, honestly. And we're doing greenway work and everything on that side, leading that way. So, you know, I'm not making a motion here or anything, but the way I see this is, I think it's a solid plan, there would have to be modifications over time, but I think much of this will depend on the city's ability to draft a grant proposal, in terms of seeing what we might could get from that type of process, and then begin to see how far or what we can do, or in terms of quadrants, to put this together over a period of time. And that's just my view of it.
Other questions or comments from council?
Let me follow up with that. You know, a couple weeks ago, when we first talked about this, you know, one of the questions I had, you know, were, you know, do we have to adopt this plan to get the bill grant? And, well, yes and no was the answer. You know, obviously, if you have a plan, it probably would bode well for applying for the grant. But where I am, quite frankly, is, while it's a good plan, I think we've got to think in terms of, you know, where do we get the money? And my notion of it is, if we do, we adopt a conceptual plan at best, and also look at, you know, there may be changes that need to be made to it. But see how much money we can get from the bill grant before we even move forward, because I won't go over it, but this city has a lot on its table, and we've got other a lot of capital projects we're looking at. And once we get the grant, we can sort of determine how that fits in, you know, with our other priorities, and what kind of, you know, what kind of financial obligation we're willing to take on. So, but at this point, you know, we, you know, get the council, the consensus of the council, the vote is to proceed with the, at most, would be the conceptual plan, knowing that, you know, there will be, need to be some changes, and we submit, you know, our grant application, see how much money we can get, before we really move forward to any degree. As I understand the resolution that's been proposed, we're not making any commitment or any kind of financial support, and we're not saying move forward with the implementation. So, I'm going back over to some of the same ground, so let me just stop with that, but that's pretty much where I am, you know, with this.
Sort of echo Bob's comments and Harold's. You know, I've talked to many of the business owners, and I know many of the Shriners, many of those are small business owners. I see some of them sitting here tonight. I've known Don many years, going way back. You know, their piece isn't as important as a conceptualized plan, and that's an extremely valuable piece to how this thing develops out. The key is for all of us, maybe, to keep our feet on the ground a little bit and think that this is a concept. It's not an implementation at all, by any means. As a matter of fact, if we had the $25 million bill grant today, I wouldn't vote to fund the remaining $19 million. I don't know where it'd come from. There'd have to be a resource to provide that. So, what I did learn in some basic conversations about the bill grant is, we don't have to do the whole plan. If we got $10 million on the bill grant, we can put $10 million towards something. I think that the dual-impact piece is where do we start with that, and where do we start even in this conceptual plan? And maybe the answer to that is, you start the downtown piece and work out, because it gets more complicated the further you go. And that is, more and more people get disrupted, more and more businesses get disrupted, the further you go. The concern I have, though, and it's a concern for this council, is that we have multiple plans for multiple projects. We have a comp plan, that's a 20-year plan. We have a parson rec plan. We've got all these plans, so it's real easy to say, we need to do this because it's in the plan. Okay? But we don't need to do it if we don't have the money, even if there is a plan. So, conceptually, this does dovetail extremely well with some of the initiatives that the Downtown Corporation has taken on with their new plan. It dovetails extremely well with New Leaf Society, and what they're trying to do around town. It dovetails really nice with our comprehensive plan and what it tries to do. But it is a concept that we would even need to reassess where to even begin on the concept if we had any money given to us today. And I really want to ultimately reiterate the fact that I would not vote to spend a dime on this concept as it is, until we really worked out the details of maybe every phase, if it's Phase A, B, C, whatever it is, however it's broken out. But once there's been money set aside and allocated for this, we then go back to that segment of the plan and reconstruct it. And it gives a lot of people a lot more time to think about it. This, to Tool's credit and to city staff's credit, this is a concept. It's like pulling out a blank sheet of paper and saying, this is kind of what we're thinking. And then getting that on paper...
And then getting that on paper, so that it is at least digestible enough for everyone to kind of get their brains around it. And the first number I went to was 46 million, or 43 million, and I'm like, that's a little issue. I was not totally in agreement for spending the $140,000 on the study, because I knew the dollar amount was going to be so big that it's going to be hard to act on. But, conceptually, it truly needed to be done. Tracy's comments about what's happened with impact elements, what they're trying to do conceptually, and all the other things that it touches, is extremely important to this city and where we move. And it's real easy to say that we, it's always been the way it is, it's probably going to always be okay, but there's a lot of people in some rural communities that have said the same thing, and they're withering up, drying away, going away. And Harold sees that more than anybody on his daily tracks throughout the state with his league work. So, I believe it's important that we have a concept of what we want to do. But I think it's ultra-important that those that are going to work on this concept, and those of us that are going to ultimately have to figure out how we're going to fund it, you know, there's a section here for DOT. DOT could contribute up to $22 million, where there's going to be some money we've got to spend anyway at some point, for some DOT enhancements there. So, there's a lot of partners in this that are extremely important, but the most important piece is that as a community, we maintain our partnership as a community through dialogue. And to understand that nobody's got any intentions of harming anybody else, or anybody else's business, or anybody else's way of life, let's work on this together, try to make it right as we go along. Concept's not perfect. I don't like all the pieces of the concept. Richard's comments hit home. I don't, that's, I call that country boy math. That's pretty easy to figure out. One lane's going to be pretty tough. But that's okay. It's a concept. Let's take all these comments and take them to heart, and start working on this thing as a community, with the understanding that we don't have a dollar yet. And without dollars, it doesn't really matter. So I think if we can all agree on that, and we have love, trust, communication, and respect, love our community, we trust each other to do the right thing, we want to respect each other's position, and where they at, we want to communicate about it all along the way, then we're probably going to be okay with this. And that's kind of where I stand on it.
Council questions? There's a couple of questions the folks raised that I just wanted to touch on. Chief Smith, just wanted to confirm, you all, and clarify, when we're involved in the planning, process, and feedback. Correct?
Yes.
I think we had some of your representatives at, someone, I just wanted to make sure of that. And obviously, further evaluations, Jim mentioned, would happen down the road with those more concrete plans. Chris, you, we talked about Spartanburg for the economic development, but you had another case up there for Hillsborough Street, which I think, a little closer to home, down in Raleigh. Can you touch on that project? Because I think it's very similar.
It is. Let me find that for you. So, the Hillsborough Street corridor in Raleigh, after that construction project was completed, which, that was originally a five-lane roadway with some two-lane roundabouts that is now currently a three-lane roadway, which is what we're proposing here in the mix in the neighborhood zone, with single-lane roundabouts, and has 17,000 vehicles a day. But they saw an increase of 42% in sales, of retail sales, along that corridor, after that project was done. And a more, you know, West Jefferson, after they did their streetscape improvements, which consisted of bulbouts and landscaping, which is very important, as well as placemaking elements, they saw an increase of 14% in their visitors to West Jefferson. So that's also a little closer to home.
Chief, we had, did we have a pedestrian strike at Anthony Road recently? I believe I remember seeing Maple and Anthony.
Chapel Hill.
Yeah. No, it's Harden, it's Chapel Hill, Harden.
Yes.
Okay. Yeah. I just wanted to share, at the very beginning of this project, Ernie mentioned something, as we had our community kickoff at the Paramount Theater. And Chris, as you mentioned, this design is really focused on people. And when you think about people, it's the walkers, it's people in cars, it's people who live on the road. And one of the things Ernie shared was that design has to focus on, how do all people interact with this corridor safely? Because everybody deserves to go home safe. And when you have a design like this that encourages speed, that does not allow for safe pedestrian crossings, it does not encourage people to go home safe. And we've already seen that multiple times with pedestrian strikes. And it's just a question of, how long do we wait on this plan? How long do we wait on planning in our community in general? And how many lives are lost or negatively impacted in that timeframe? So this is a good step forward, in that it tackles a missing gap in our master plan. Chris, can you flip to the hierarchy of plans slide? Down a couple more. There it is. Yep. So, as has been mentioned multiple times, this fits into a hierarchy of plans council adopted in 2015. Our Destination Burlington Vision Plan has been mentioned, which is that really high-level view. And if you read through that plan, it mentions multiple other plans that need to be conducted. And the purpose of all this planning is to help us better understand our community. We're over 28 square miles, serving over 57,000 residents. There's a lot of pieces to this community. And as Jim mentioned, our budget is not infinite. Harold mentioned that as well. It's our job to make sure that when we choose to spend a dollar, we're choosing to do so in a way that best leverages that tax dollar for the people involved in our community. And the more we plan, the more we understand that that has an impact beyond just the individual item we spend it on. As Tracy mentioned, there are multiple impacts for health outcomes, for safety, for livability, for quality of life. And the more we work to understand that by combining this plan with our pedestrian master plan, with recreation plans, with housing plans, the more we better understand that we can direct specific dollars to specific projects and make an outsized impact. An outsized impact that returns significant multiples of that dollar. And it may not be as much as $23, but really, anywhere near that would be a significant investment that we'd all love to have on our retirement accounts in the stock market. So, as cities, we do a great job planning, and I'm proud to see our council moving us along in the concept phase. There's still more to be done, but this advances the ball down the court significantly. Any other questions from council? Or do I hear a motion regarding this plan?
Well, I'd like to say something, since it's my turn, it seems. But I'm impressed with what all of you said. Really, it's very much that you've thought about this, and how important a decision this is. I think one of the speakers said that Maple Avenue has always been the way it is. That's precisely what it is that we're trying to do, to move beyond the complacency that we sometimes have set in, because things have always been this way. And so we take it for granted that it will always be that way. And I think when we first started talking, when the consultant said to us, Maple Avenue was bleak and uninviting to the people who are entering our city in that way. We want it to be an inviting place, and we know how critical first impressions are on people. When they drive into our city, they get a sense of who we are. And that, I don't believe, is who we are. It's just been sort of cobbled together over the decades, and it's ended up the way it is. Now I think it's our turn to just step back and say, this isn't the impression that we want to make. This isn't the city that we want to project. I think it's a good plan, it certainly has some problems with it, just because of the living into it, and all of those things will change as we go along into construction, as we go along into the funding, and all of the major issues that are involved in this. But I think what, for me, is the important thing, is the intentionality. It's our intention to improve our community, and that this is who we are, that we are moving, and we are not going to have it be the way it always has been, because it's important to have a forward look for a community. That's what people are looking for when they consider moving here. That's what people who live here feel about it, that they would like it to be a place that feels like it's going to continue to be comfortable, and also, we're taking care of things. I thought that the speech by Mikey about the ballpark, about his excitement, even though that's where he works, in driving by the ballpark, makes him want to go in, and that's what I want for this community as well. And we took care of that iteratively, one step at a time, each year. Tony and his staff thought about how this was going to work, and how they could fund it, and all of that. So we know how to do it, and we can continue to do it, so.
And the other side of this thing is that, you know, the city's implemented, invested tons of money years ago for the growth of the city south of the interstate. The thing we're missing, really, is not, we're not really looking at this plan so much, is we got an opportunity for substantial residential growth south of the interstate on this road. Substantial growth where people will literally commute in. I think that would can honestly be an economic boon for the downtown area in terms of restaurants, in terms of other retail-type situations. So, it's really even more than just this, if you look at it. It's, in some ways, over time, if it could be done, it's tying in the growth, we always think about the growth west. It's literally tying that growth in, going east, and then south, which it may not be in our lifetime, but certainly, over a period of time, would be, certainly be advantageous for the city.
Any other questions from council? Or do we hear a motion regarding the same?
We got a motion, okay?
There's no motion, Colonel.
I'm trying to find it all.
Mr. Mayor. Yes? Mr. Ward has suggested one edit to the resolutions in your packet, so you'll find that in the color sheet at your desk, if someone's interested in that one, in a motion, you may want to make reference to that copy. It deletes a few words off of the last square as.
And just to clarify, the motion, or the resolution is technically item three on the agenda. So, motion regarding item two is simply in regard to the draft plan.
Sorry, something.
Do I hear a motion on the floor regarding the draft plan?
I'm going to move that we approve the Renew Maple Avenue Corridor Plan.
Do I hear a second?
I will second the plan, with reiteration, that this is a concept unfunded.
Okay. Let me add one final thing, that this is not to go forward with implementation, correct?
I think it's important to note, just like when we adopted the pedestrian plan, or the Burlington, Destination Burlington Plan, or any of our plans, that is not the council decision to fully fund that plan. Again, it is help in moving a plan forward, and help in, down the road, being able to align that plan with future plans. And this is, as the councils move forward, we recognize that in our prioritization discussions, it's helpful that dollar amounts. This is one of the first plans where we've asked for those full dollar amounts to be disclosed at the end. I think that's one of the reasons why we've had some of the discussions we've had. But in no case do we ever fully fund a plan like this at the adoption of the plan. This is simply a recognition that we have received and recognized this plan.
But for clarification, we've got multiple plans that we will do quick hitter projects.
Yep.
I'm not in favor of quick hitter projects. I want to be real clear on that. I'm not in favor of anything other than approving the plan in concept. And then as we get funding, we can determine at that point in time what we want to do moving forward. And if that's acceptable, that's what I want to do.
Yep.
Yeah, that's where I am, yes.
Any other questions or comments regarding the motion?
I'm going to ask Mr. Huffman. So, Mr. Huffman, was it we put on the notes here, a motion second to adopt, then we also have the resolution? Are those redundant?
I believe they are.
You want to help clarify?
I don't believe you have to do, you've already done, you've already held your public hearing under item number two. I don't think it takes any action. Actually, new business number three is the adoption of a resolution, adopting the conceptual Renew Maple Avenue Corridor Plan. I don't think you need to do it twice.
Okay. Would you mind amending your motion?
Tell me how.
I don't think you need to do anything further on item number two. I think you need to move to new business, number three, taking into consideration your on your own sheet, your resolution, and just prove it up or down.
And just for the record, could you withdraw your motion?
I withdraw my motion.
Be favorable to that. Motion's been withdrawn. We are now discussing item number three, which is the resolution this council has on this salmon color sheet in front of them.
All right. I just want to make sure that we can still pursue funding for this project.
Absolutely.
I'm just making sure, because I'm seeing backing up, and I want to make sure that that is still part of what it is that we would be doing, grants, other opportunities.
Fully concur with pursuing any funding, whether it be bill grant, whether it be DOT, or anybody. But before we engage in spending any money to do anything, I think we need to look at the phase that we're dealing with, and clarify exactly what that's going to be. And if we need stakeholder involvement again, or another public hearing, that's exactly what we do at that point in time, before we invest the money.
There won't be a bulldozer there tomorrow.
Somebody mentioned our lifetime, and might not even say that.
Assistant Manager Kirkman, did you want to mention anything regarding item three, the resolution?
If you'd favor it.
Okay. Excellent. All right. Any further questions from council, or do I hear a motion regarding the resolution in front of you?
I make a motion we approve the resolution. Now, I'm not sure if we need to read all this into the minutes here today or not.
No.
No. It will be in the record.
Be in the record, that we approve the resolution as submitted here concerning this issue.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Any questions regarding the motion to approve the resolution? All those in favor, please say aye. All those opposed, motion is passed. Thank you. Thank you, everyone, for your public feedback on this. As Chris mentioned, this was a really collaborative project, as the city has work to do on all strategic planning going forward. We appreciate everyone who participated in every level, whether it was a community work session, an online survey, coming out to speak to city council, all of that is critical as we work to become better and better at planning the future of our community. Next on our agenda, item four, city council will consider a resolution, will consider adopting a resolution to approve city staff to apply for a build grant for the Renew Maple Avenue Corridor Plan. At this time, we'll recognize Assistant City Manager Kirkman.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Obviously, already had discussion.
We'll give folks just a moment to step out the door. Don't forget your peanuts and crackerjack on the way out. We want to see you all at a Royals baseball game.
So, obviously, there's already been discussion on the bill grant, so thus what this next resolution captures, is that, you know, staff would move forward with the plan for the bill grant. Council member Owen already mentioned this $25 million maximum, and also want to reemphasize that it's 100% grant according to the bill technicals that are on their website, and so that wouldn't require any local match to apply for this. And so, that's what the resolution is before you.
Any questions from council regarding this resolution? Do I hear a motion from council?
Make a motion that we adopt the...
Make a motion that we adopt the resolution to apply for the bill grant.
Okay.
Any questions regarding the motion to adopt? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion is passed. That concludes our regular business. We had no public comment signed up for this evening. Do I hear any final city council comments?
There are, Morgan can speak to this better, but there are pop-up parties and I think that name is going to stick, whether we want it to or not. There's a wonderful band full of games and toys and activities going on twice, three days a week, right?
Correct. Yeah, there's six locations happening there for three days, every week for 10 weeks. And Park and Play, this is what we're trying to remember to call it.
The people there are calling it pop-up party, so, yes. So, we can keep trying, but anyway.
Change the name, buddy.
Lots of kids were out and parents were there and the band is wonderful and the two employees were doing a great job. Really doing well. So, if you get a chance, they start at 1:00 to 2:30 and then 3:00 to 4:30 in different locations.
Yeah. We have a schedule. If folks would like to attend, we can do that.
Folks can find that online under Park and Play through our recreation. And that's a continuation of the youth solutions discussion in the community in response to the need for more positive recreation activities for kids.
Yeah, and the police were there playing games with kids.
Awesome. Awesome. Couple other events that folks are looking for something to do in the next couple of days. We mentioned the Burlington Royals Fan Fest is this Friday from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. And then we also have the summer, or Sounds of Summer Music Series over at North Park. That'll be on Saturday the 22nd from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. over at the Blackwell Stage. And then Royals opening night is just around the corner on June 24th, 6:30 p.m. things kick off. And as Mikey mentioned, we'll have fireworks at that game. Hope to see lots of folks out in the ballpark. Another opportunity for folks to give feedback, we have a fair housing workshop on June 26th at City Hall from 6:00 to 7:00 p.m. And then Fourth Friday is coming up in just a couple of weeks at Downtown on June 28th from 5:30 to 9:30 p.m. And then July 3rd in the park is just around the corner as well, as we celebrate Fourth of July one day early. From 5:00 to 9:00 p.m., there'll be fireworks there starting at 9 o'clock as well. And then we have a very special recognition this evening. It is Kate Croxton's last meeting with us before she heads off to bigger and better things.
California.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Kate, we appreciate your time and your devotion to the city council and the city of Burlington.
I appreciate it. I'm really going to miss this.
Thank you, Kate. Wish you the best, so.
Thanks. I'll be sure to check in every once in a while.
I'm sure you will.
Any other council comments? Do I hear a motion, Agent? All those in favor, please say aye. All those opposed, any councils concerned?
Kate Woodport.